And that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and all the blessings and opportunities it has brought us. Thank you for the abundance of blessings you have bestowed upon this great city. Father, we pray that you would continue to bless our city, bless every resident who resides within its boundaries, and every employee who works to make it great. Bless the children of our city, protect them, and keep them safe from harm. Bless this council and our city manager as we labor in the calling of public service. Give us wisdom, compassion, and love as we serve your people, and let all we do glorify you. These and all other blessings we ask in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Thank you very much. The clerk will please call the roll.
Ms. Green?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smiggle?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Winn?
Here.
Mr. Frame?
Here. The motion is to excuse Mr. Protigero, please.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. The clerk will please read the resolution for the closed meeting.
A resolution certifying a closed meeting of the Council of the City of Norfolk held in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Adopt the resolution. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Norfolk City Council Chambers. We're glad to have you here. For the benefit of those of you who do not regularly attend our council sessions, the first thing we're going to do this evening is we have three ceremonial matters, and we have with the Great Lake Taylor Ladies Basketball Team, here state champions, back again. At the conclusion of the ceremonial matters, we'll move directly to the formal agenda. There is, let's see, one public hearing on our formal agenda, then we have one short consent agenda item, and then we have, I think, 13 regular agenda items. We'll vote on all of these matters in just the way they are numbered on the printed docket. At the conclusion of our formal agenda, if any member of the public would like to address the council on a non-agenda item, that's something that's not on our printed docket, you'll be given that opportunity. But in order to have your name called, you must first have signed a slip of paper which the clerk has made available in the lobby behind the council chambers before the meeting began. So, again, thank you for coming here. We have a very special guest here tonight, the Lake Taylor Girls Basketball Team. We have Coach Sandra Sawyer here. Coach, thank you for coming up. If you could come to the podium. I know the athletic director, Bob Panabacker, is here. Neither one of you are strangers to these council chambers, and so we're honored to have the girls' basketball team here. And on behalf of the city council, and a really proud city of Norfolk and a community, want to thank you for not only, you know, winning the state championship, and that's always great, but how well you represented the city of Norfolk through the entire season and through the entire tournament. It's been a joy to follow you, and so thank you for coming down tonight. Coach, I'm going to read this resolution, and then the council's going to have to vote on it. Okay? So, if you will, the resolution reads, "Whereas after winning Group Three at AAA State Championships in 2010 and 2013, the Lake Taylor High School Titans Girls Basketball Team is recognized regionally and across the Commonwealth as a basketball powerhouse. Whereas under the leadership of head coach Sandra Sawyer, the Lady Titans turned in another outstanding performance for the 2013-2014 regular season that propelled them into the playoffs. Whereas the Lady Titans defeated the Glenn Allen Jaguars 64 to 42 in the Group 4A South Region semifinal game, it went on to defeat the Woodrow Wilson Presidents by a score of 44 to 39 to secure the Group 4A South Region Championship, the first region title for Coach Sawyer and the Lady Titans. And whereas the Lake Taylor Lady Titans advanced to the Group 4A State Tournament where they defeated the Loudoun County Raiders 42 to 37 in the semifinals, thereby advancing to the state championship. Whereas in the state title game played at Virginia Commonwealth University Siegel Center on March 13, 2014, the Lake Taylor Lady Titans defeated the Lady Colonels of William Fleming High School from Roanoke by a score of 57 to 50 to clinch their second consecutive and third overall state basketball championship. And so now therefore be it resolved, Section 1, that the Council of the City of Norfolk on behalf of the entire community hereby expresses great pride in the Lake Taylor High School Girls Basketball Team, head coach Sandra Sawyer and her staff. And Number 2, that the council offers them warmest congratulations on the occasion of the historic achievement of winning the last Group AAA State Championship and winning the first Group 4A State Championship. And then Section 3, that this resolution be recorded in the permanent proceedings of the city council, and that a copy be presented to Coach Sawyer and her team." So, Mr. Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Adopt the resolution. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Coach. Coach, I can... We're going to want some pictures here in a second, but we'd love to hear from you or any member of your team that you think is appropriate.
Let me just share a few words of gratitude. Thanks. Behind anything that's successful, you have to have a good support system. So, I do have to thank my beloved Dean Dr. Jacobs Miller, our principal, for his support. Dr. Miller, thank you. Our athletic director, Mr. Bobby Panabacker. Mr. Panabacker, thank you. I don't know, Mr. Something is here. Dr. King, but, um, wow. School Board, I'm sorry.
This is credited Lake Taylor High School. Is that right? I'm sorry, go ahead.
The school board has also been supportive of us, but I thank the city council, Mayor Frame, for inviting us. Most of all, I want to thank my babies. Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Actually, I'm talking to the city council, but to my ladies, ah, man, just thank you for just trusting, trusting in each other, trusting in me. Man, it's just, with today's society, it's hard to find somebody to trust and tag on to and, you know, have them lead you. But, um, we've been blessed with the young ladies that we have and their families and their parents, again, with our administration, to just take a chance on each other, trust each other. And things happened for us. In the beginning, wow, I think all of us wanted to jump at some point, but, um, you know, we just trusted each other. We just had some good leaders on the floor. Our senior captain, India McKinney, everybody just started making everybody accountable. I mean, all that sounds good on the court, and it was good for us to be successful in the end, but those are life skills that we need to have, trusting somebody, finding somebody that you can really trust. That's going to be rare, going to be disappointments in life. Being accountable, holding somebody accountable, all those things that happened for us, it happened for a reason, not just in winning a state championship, but life skills, learning. There are going to be some situations where people disappoint you. And not just put all your eggs in one basket, just move on, you know? Learn from it. You can't change it. Learn from it, move on. We had some of those situations this year, a few setbacks with those things that didn't kill us and made us strong. And we just played for each other, played for the cause. Nobody cared who got the credit. I mean, like I said, all those things are good attributes for winning on the court, but that's life, really. And these young ladies, some of them will leave the nest this year, a lot of them will come back. But the relationships that we have, so memorable. Well, even the ones that are gone, the ones that are coming back, we have so much fun. I mean, the laughs, the cries, the prayers, I mean, we just share everything. We believe in each other, and we're just one big family. And behind everything, you have to have a strong, strong support system. And I named this person in the end because he's just been there for us. He go before us, he makes sure everything is right for us. Not to belittle him, he's our bus driver, but he's our security man. He's, I mean, he does everything for us to make sure everything is smooth, so when I come through or when we come through, everything is okay. And that's Mr. Theo Ford. Mr. Ford, thank you so much for everything you do for us. He's been our bus driver for, wow. Man, I don't know, I think you're getting your third ring this year, right? He's been there, he's been with us for a long time. I know as city council, I'm going to let you go. I know, y'all know, when you really have somebody that you can trust, that's a great worker, you hold on to them. There's a rarity. And Mr. Ford is, man, he's one of a kind. He's like my brother, thinks he's my dad sometimes, but, you know, I have to put him in check, too. But, um, I just thank everybody for just, for the cause, just coming together for the cause. I really, it's been a blessing, just... Man, when we won our first state championship, I had my little office redone at home, like, you know, there was never going to be another one. Now, this is my third one, along with the three other state championship trophies and all the other accolades. It's special, but nothing's more special than the relationships that we have. Ladies, I love you. I can't thank you enough, man. They just, man... Can y'all stand up?
Sure.
Is India McKinney a senior? My far left, India McKinney, she's a senior, she's a back-to-back state champion. We have Taylor Whitley, she's a senior. Kiara Cooper, I want to say Kiki, that's her basketball name. She's a junior, she'll be coming back. We have Kalisha Ferris, sophomore. She's a, Kiki, raise your hand. Kalisha, they're back-to-back champions. We have a sophomore in Malaysia Balmar, a junior. Joanne Williams in the back, back there, freshman. Kayla Epps to her right, a senior. I want to say that, Andronette Cuffey. And then we have another back-to-back champion back there, sophomore. Marquesia Poole, these government names are killing me, but... But ladies, man, thank you. Thank you. Anybody want to say anything?
Okay.
Well, it's a kind of a...
Sure. All right. Well, Coach, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have a camera?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask some comments? Ladies of the Lake Taylor High School championship team, I remember when your coach was the dynamic basketball player at Granby High School. My husband was the guidance counselor there, so we used to always follow the teams around. And Mrs. Sawyer, we are so grateful that you decided to stay in Norfolk and as an alumnus of our public school system, render your services here, and you won this championship again, even after they changed the regions on you. So, congratulations to you and your team.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, you want to say anything?
I think, in addition to how great these young ladies are as athletes, what makes me feel also most proud is they're scholars. And a lot of the young ladies who played last year have gone on, and a couple of them had above a three-point GPA. And I'm just proud of you because you have placed your academics at a very high standard as well as your athletic skills, and I just hope you continued success in whatever you do.
All right. All right, well, Coach, thank you, Madam Principal, thank you, Bob, thank you very much for coming down. If anybody's got a camera, the council would love to take a picture with the team. If y'all would just come up here, you think?
Lori's got one.
Lori's got one.
Oh.
We get the, if you'll just come up front here. Coach, congratulations, Coach, again, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Job, kids?
Congratulations.
Even standing at the podium, some of you can't stand in front of me.
Wow, get in here, Ms. Green. Get in here, okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Thanks, ladies. I see you guys. Thank you all for coming down. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, thanks, thanks. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good job. Good to see you again.
Okay, is Ruth Jones here? Ruth, why don't you come on up? Ruth is the executive director of the YWCA of Southampton Roads. Good to see you again.
Good to see you as well.
For all you're doing. This is a proclamation concerning Sexual Assault Awareness Month, Walk a Mile in Her Shoes event. And so, I mean, I'll read the proclamation, and then we'll see if Ruth would like to say anything for us. It reads, "Whereas one out of every five women in our local community will be raped or sexually assaulted in her lifetime. Whereas the YWCA of Southampton Roads is the largest provider of sexual assault support services in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Whereas in fiscal year 2013, the organization offered critical services to Hampton Road citizens, crisis response, referrals, resources, and information to 4,183 hotline callers, violence prevention and outreach education to 3,179 individuals, mental health counseling and support to 2,855 sexual assault victims. And whereas, in order to increase awareness, the YWCA of Southampton Roads will host the third annual Walk a Mile in Her Shoes Men's March to stop rape, sexual assault in general, and gender violence. Now therefore, I Paul Frame, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, on behalf of the city council to hereby proclaim April 2014 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Norfolk, and urge all citizens to take a stand against rape, sexual assault, and gender violence against women, and to participate in the YWCA's Walk a Mile in Her Shoes event, given under my hand this eighth day of May of April 2014." And so, Ms. Jones, would you like to, let me hand, give this to you, the proclamation, and Ruth, we would love to hear from you. That's quite a load you're carrying there. Sure, thank you. Okay.
Mayor Frame, city council members, city manager Marcus Jones, good evening on behalf of all of the individuals who work and volunteer at the YWCA Southampton Roads. I have to share with you that two years ago, exactly two years ago, I was in Washington, DC, really enjoying my professional career, and then I learned about this position here in Southampton Roads. I didn't want to come back. This is a place where I was born and raised, but there were so many memories for me that kept me away for over 20 years. But when I learned about the issues that the YWCA tackles each and every day, I felt that this would be the right place for me. It's amazing how prevalent this issue is in our community, and it's even more amazing that we just don't talk about it enough. So I'd like to thank you and all of the city council members and the city representatives for supporting the YWCA Southampton Roads and helping us to raise awareness about this critical issue. On behalf of the mothers, the sisters, the daughters, and the wives who were impacted by this issue, I'd like to present to you the signature red shoe that our grand marshals will be wearing next Thursday in downtown Norfolk when they walk a mile in our shoes so that they can help us raise awareness. Thank you for all that you're doing, and thank you on behalf of the individuals we serve.
Sure, thank you, Ruth. Thank you. You could give it to the clerk over there.
Oh, no, he's got to give it...
No, okay.
He's got to get the red shoe.
Okay. I was trying to avoid that. Ruth, thanks a lot. Thanks for everything you're doing. Okay, that's terrific.
Don't let it catch you up there.
Yeah, don't let you catch up down and down.
It's a name on it, Paul.
It is, it's got...
Is it yours?
In the front, there's a plaque.
Thank you. That was sweet. Thank you very much. Okay, and I see our Commonwealth attorney out there, Greg Underwood. And Mr. Underwood, you're here with the Director of Norfolk's Victim Witness Assistance Program, Heather Fuss, is that right? Yeah, there she is. Okay, we're glad to have you down here.
Thank you.
And we have a proclamation concerning victims, crime victims' rights week. Greg, and let me read this to you. It reads, "Whereas more than 22 million Americans are victims of crimes each year, and these crimes also affect relatives, friends, colleagues, and neighbors. Whereas crime can leave a lasting emotional, physical, psychological, and financial impact on people of all ages and abilities, and all economic, racial, and social backgrounds. And whereas the Crime Victims Fund, established in 1984 by the Victims of Crime Act, annually provides more than 3.5 million crime victims with a permanent source of emotional support and financial compensation through fines and penalties paid by convicted federal offenders. Whereas in support of our residents affected by crime, the Office of the Norfolk Commonwealth's Attorney and its Victim Witness Assistance Program partner with local victim service programs, public safety and criminal justice officials, and concern citizens throughout the city of Norfolk and the Commonwealth of Virginia. Whereas this year's National Crime Victims Rights Week theme of 30 years restoring the balance of justice celebrates the opportunity to renew Norfolk's commitment to serve all victims of crime in the United States. Now therefore, I Paul Frame, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, to hereby proclaim the week of April 6 through the 12th, 2014 as Crime Victims Rights Week in the City of Norfolk, and encourage citizens to join me in expressing sincere appreciation for those victims and crime survivors who have transformed personal tragedy into a motivating force to help build a more just community, and it's given under my hand this eighth day of April." And Mr. Underwood, thanks for coming down, thank you for bringing this to our attention, and thanks for what your office is doing with this. Thank you.
I'd like to make a few brief remarks.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Jones, I'd like to thank each of you for leaving your mark, for leaving your mark on National Crime Victim Rights Week here in Norfolk with this proclamation. Earlier today downstairs in the lobby, there were several people who've been impacted by crimes in our community and supporters of crime victims leaving their mark on some canvases to express how they feel about being victims and also to express their love for loved ones who were victims. Those canvases are unique pieces of art that we will proudly display in our office to show our support for those victims and those supporters of those victims. Here today, I have several members from my staff, and will you please stand and be recognized? Don't be shy.
Great. Thank you all for coming down. Thank you.
On a daily basis, our office works hard to ensure the ethical, efficient, and effective prosecution of defendants. Not only do we do that, but we also look after the comprehensive representation of victims and witnesses and their rights. Again, I want to thank all the members of council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Jones, for your support. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you, Mr. Underwood. Thank you for bringing this to our attention again, and thanks for the great work of your office as well. Thank you. Okay, we have one more. Where's Mr. Riddick? Where's Jim? Riddick? Jim, if you'll come forward. This is a proclamation on behalf of Norfolk, of National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and of course, everybody knows Jim is the Director of Norfolk's Emergency Operations Center. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas the proper response of emergency personnel is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, whereas without public safety telecommunications efficiently and effectively linking our citizens with those law enforcement fire and medical first responders, their services would be delayed. And whereas the public safety telecommunications exhibit compassion, understanding, and professionalism while monitoring activities, providing information, and ensuring safety under the stress of tense situations. Whereas each year, the second full week of April is nationally reserved as a time to honor these dedicated men and women for providing a vital service within our local, state, and federal communities. Now therefore, I Paul Frame, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, to hereby proclaim April 13 through the 19th, 2014 as National Public Safety Communicators, Telecommunicators Week, and the City of Norfolk, and urge all citizens to observe this week in recognition of all of the emergency dispatchers and other communication specialists whose diligence and professionalism help to protect the health and safety of our citizens, and this is given under my hand this eighth day of April 2014." Jim, thanks for the great work you're doing as well, by the way, and for the leadership you're offering. Okay? We'd love to hear a couple of words from you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, and Mr. Jones, again, I want to extend my gratitude and that of our department for this proclamation, this recognition for another successful team we have in Norfolk, that being the amazing men and women of our Norfolk 911 Emergency Communications, a few of which we brought tonight, if you won't mind standing for, to be recognized.
Thank you.
As you know, thousands of calls they receive every year, high-stress environment, but a critical mission. And as you said, Mr. Mayor, they deal with compassion and professionalism, an all-star team, and we're very proud for the work that they do. So, thank you again for this recognition and this proclamation.
Thank you, Jim, and thanks for the great work that you do and all of your staff does as well. Thanks for coming down again. Okay? Okay, that concludes the ceremonial matters for the evening, and we'll move directly then to public hearing number one, please, Mr. Clerk.
Public hearing one scheduled for the state to hear comments on approving a non-exclusive conduit construction franchise agreement between the City of Norfolk and Sadera Networks LLC.
All right, there are no members of the public signed up to address the council on this matter, so if there are no questions, you can call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance approving a non-exclusive conduit construction franchise agreement with Sadera Networks LLC, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. C1, please.
Approve C1. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R1?
R1 is an ordinance granting a special exception to C Sisters LLC authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment known as Bean There Coffee House Cafe on property located at 223 East City Hall Avenue. By 5-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Call the roll, please.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R5, what are we, R5?
Yes, sir.
5 and 5A, you want to, okay.
R5 is an ordinance granting a special exception to CVS Pharmacy to permit a retail goods establishment to operate after midnight on property located at 3717. R5A is an ordinance granting a special exception to CVS Pharmacy to permit the operation of a commercial drive-through on property located at 3717 Hampton Boulevard. R5B is an ordinance granting a special exception to CVS 10021VA LLC authorizing the sale of alcoholic beverages... Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R3.
An ordinance granting a downtown development certificate to permit the construction of a multiple-family residential building on property located at 252 West Tazewell Street. By 5-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R3.
An ordinance granting a downtown development certificate to permit the construction of a multiple-family residential building on property located at 252 West Tazewell Street. By 5-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R3.
An ordinance granting a downtown development certificate to permit the construction of a multiple-family residential building on property located at 252 West Tazewell Street. By 5-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R3.
An ordinance granting a downtown development certificate to permit the construction of a multiple-family residential building on property located at 252 West Tazewell Street. By 5-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R1.
R1 is an ordinance granting a special exception to C Sisters LLC authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment known as Bean There Coffee House Cafe on property located at 223 East City Hall Avenue. By 5-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Call the roll, please.
Dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R2.
An ordinance granting a downtown development certificate to permit the construction of a multiple-family residential building on property located at 252 West Tazewell Street. By 5-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R3.
An ordinance granting a downtown development certificate to permit the construction of a multiple-family residential building on property located at 252 West Tazewell Street. By 5-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R3.
An ordinance granting a downtown development certificate to permit the operation of an entertainment establishment known as 328 Tequila on property located at 328 West 20th Street. By 5-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R5.
What, are we, R5?
Yes, sir. Five and 5A, you wanna, okay.
Uh, R5 is an ordinance granting a special exception to CVS Pharmacy to permit a retail goods establishment to operate after midnight on property located at 3717. R5A is an ordinance granting a special exception to CVS Pharmacy to permit the operation of a commercial drive-through on property located at 3717 Hampton Boulevard. R5B is an ordinance granting a special exception to CVS 10021VA LLC authorizing the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption at an establishment known as CVS Pharmacy on property located at 3717 Hampton Boulevard, and the Planning Commission, by 5-0 vote, recommends approval.
Randy Royal is here to answer questions, if anybody has any.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. For me, this is the first time I've seen the design of this. I don't know how much has been discussed and what, if any, their design standards. It seems to me that this fits in with what is happening along ODU. I wish all of the CVSs in Norfolk would look like this. I don't know why Hampton Boulevard gets the pretty bricks and everybody else gets the stucco throughout the city. But my, my concern?
You really feel that.
Yeah. I mean, it just, we should hold these type of design standards throughout the city. I mean, I agree with that. If we can get them to do it over here in Hampton, why couldn't we get them to do it at Little Creek Road and Shore Drive and Military Highway, you know, in Poplar Hall area? It should all look like this.
All it takes is a vote.
Yeah, but my, my concern with this is, and I don't know, maybe it was just left off, I don't see any trees. And I know that you're limited with the spacing here, but even in the medians in the parking lot, maybe they were just left out of the diagrams. But I, I know that Dr. Whibley, we've talked about this before, particularly with drive-throughs and having trees to cover this.
That's it. We agreed to have a rule with landscaping.
Right.
Frankly, I was never approached with this design.
I don't see any trees in any of the pictures or diagrams with it, and I think it's also interesting that there's, it looks like there's two entrances. There's an entrance on the main road on Hampton Boulevard and, and then one on the side in the back of the building. I guess you have to do that because it's in there. I mean, I appreciate this, but I would like to see trees, and I thought, I thought that was required.
Do you want to?
I mean, where, where are the trees, guys?
But wait a minute, go ahead, go ahead, Randy.
I'm kind of surprised it's, it's not in there. We did do a layout, we've got extensive landscaping on the site, we actually added additional landscaping back on Bowden's Ferry to help the neighbors back there. George, you've, you've seen the plan.
Yeah, no, that's absolutely correct, and I apologize if the landscaping plan didn't make it into your package. It's extensive.
And, and the architectural elevations, we have worked extensively with staff, with